Thursday, August. The Oregon School Board Association OSBA Board of Directors Special Meeting is called to order on Thursday, August 29, 2024 at 9:02 a.m. Good morning, everybody. I want to really appreciate you being here. This year, we have added a few, a little bit more than few meetings over Zoom beyond our in-person regular meetings. Many of them are for important purposes, including important subjects that we want to do here today. So I want to start by really acknowledging you taking time out of your busy jobs and family commitments. And start with a roll call. We might have a few people who will be joining us a little bit late and they're excused. And we'll mention those names when we go through the roll call. And when, if they join, we'll make sure that we acknowledge that they have joined. So with that, Lanell, could I have your help doing the roll call?
Craig Albright. Jeff Krepper. Chris Cronin.
Present.
Jackie Crook.
Present.
Lori Danzuka. Katrina Doughty. Neelam Gupta. Linda Hamilton.
Present.
Chris Howitt.
Present.
Trista Irvin. Greg Kents.
Present.
Christie Cockey.
Here.
Steve Lowell. Sonia McKenzie. Alonso Oliveras.
Present.
Chrissy Wrights.
Here.
Clyde Rude.
Here.
Nicole Schott. Emily Smith.
Here.
Nancy Thomas.
Here.
Glenn Walker.
Present.
Dawn Watson.
Here.
Anna Ali. Austin Felbaggie. Sammy Aladabu.
Here.
And I believe that.
I just want you to know that Lori joined as you were doing your roll calls.
Lori Danzuka. Lori, I can see your screen. Are you able to unmute and, and note that you're present? I believe Neelam. Neelam Gupta.
Here.
Lori, can you hear us? If you can hear us, please unmute and share that you're here.
If she just joined, she might be trying to connect her audio.
Yeah, that might be the case, so.
Her audio and video has already joined.
Okay. So staff will make sure we have connection with Lori, audio connection with Lori. But for the purposes of establishing a quorum, we have a quorum. And we'll make sure we can review that before the next discussion or votes. So we can hear Lori. But other than that, I'll let Lanell finish something real quick and then we'll see if we have a quorum.
14.
All right, so we do have a quorum. And the agenda on the item is approving the agenda. Just as a reminder, there was an updated packet that you have received, I believe, yesterday, V4, version four. So for those folks who are trying to make sure that they do have access to the agenda, make sure you go to yesterday's emails from Lanell and you'll have an agenda packet V4. I do have a question, Lanell, from Nancy. If we did hear her, we did hear from Nancy. So Nancy, yeah, we do, we can hear you. Perfect. And now the president entertains a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with modified action. Vice President Emily Smith.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Chris Howitt, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing there's no discussion on the motion, we'll be entering to a vote. Before we enter to a vote, I do have a clarifying question from a board member. Is board book agenda up to date? The answer is yes, the board book agenda is up to date. Thank you for the clarifying question. So now back to the motion on the floor. We're going to vote by any objection. So if you have an objection to the motion, please unmute on prompt and say, I object. Is there any objection for the motion approving the agenda as presented? Seeing there is no objection. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The, the vote to approve requires a second vote and no discussion, but no discussion on items on the consent agenda. If the board member wishes to discuss an item, we should ask to have that item removed from the consent agenda temporarily. We would discuss it and then it will be taken separately directly after the consent agenda if needed. So before we go into that, I want to ask now, if you have any questions or discussions on any consent agenda, please highlight which consent agenda it is. And then after we list all the consent agendas that you want to discuss, we'll handle them one by one. And I see a hand up from Chris Howitt. Is there any discussion items that you would like to raise on the consent agenda, Chris?
Just ready to make the motion when you are.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to raise a consent agenda for discussion? See none? We're ready for the motion. Chris, how about you recognize for a motion?
All right, thank you. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Emily Smith, second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? See, there's no discussion. It's been moved by Chris Howitt and seconded by Emily Smith to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any objection on the motion? Please unmute at this time and say, I object. Seeing there is no objection on the motion, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, the next step is, or the next agenda item is, this is the one where they're back to back tabs. Okay. OSBA Board Process Nomining and Electing OS, no, that's, that's a consent agenda. Executive Director Hiring Process. So this is the time where Bob Seringer, our external legal counsel and myself, will share with you some updates on the process and move forward with discussions. So I'm going to share with you some remarks here, especially for those who couldn't join us on July 11th. We'll bring you up to date. On July 11th, 2024, the OSBA Board voted to consider a direct appointment of the interim executive director to the permanent executive director role. On the same date, the OSBA Board of Directors directed staff to advertise the executive director position vacancy contract with an outside vendor to review the job description and salary range for the position and work with outside legal counsel to develop a process for direct appointments. OSBA staff advertised the executive director vacancy by placing the notice on the OSBA website homepage. And to my understanding also on our social media and also on our Oregon Education News as well, in addition to their website's homepage. We reached out to four possible vendors to review the executive director job description and develop a salary range for the position and worked with outside counsel to develop a process hiring an executive director, director appointment process. At the recommendation of the OSBA Executive Committee attached for review by the OSBA Board today is a process for hiring an executive director by direct appointments. And you will be able to see in the cover letter, a narrative and a summary from the memorandum from Haley Priscilla around what we have done and also relevant processes that we considered in the past. And this one now is for the direct appointment that is in alignment with where we are today. So at this time, maybe I want to add, I want to allow Bob Seringer for any additional information you may want to share at this stage about where we are and the next steps ahead of us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it would be helpful for those of you following, following along in your packet to take a moment to look at what I believe is page 14 of your packet, which is the process for hiring an executive director by direct appointment. This document attempts to set out a very deliberate process by which the board would consider whether it wishes to hire an individual as the executive director without going through a search process. A number of the steps in this document have already been taken as, as the president just went through. And in, including the preparation of this document and the direction to advertise the executive director position. What will now happen, as you've seen on your agenda, is consideration of the position description that has been recommended by the executive committee, the salary range document that has been recommended by the executive committee, and a, a set of documents that, actually, it's a single document collected in a resolution that adopts hiring standards, criteria and policy directives for the executive director position. This was prepared for the board at the board's request in order to allow the board to have some discussion in executive session about the, about the decision, the hiring decision that will be before the board today. And I can give you more details on that, but if you weren't with us at the last meeting, there are statutory requirements for having this discussion in executive session. And one of them is that, that the board adopt these hiring standards, criteria and policy directives after allowing the public an opportunity to, to speak to those. And so you, you have all of those steps present on your agenda today. It's probably a good place to stop unless there are any questions. Thank you.
So, thank you, Bob. I'll just, before we go for questions, I'll, I want to ask the board if we can streamline the questions on three items. The first one is the resolution. And we can have questions and then we will discuss the resolution further and vote on it after we go through the public comments period. So any questions on the resolution? And after the resolution, we can talk about the job description itself. And after the job description, I will be presenting the salary review study because we, you don't have in your packet, the salary review study. I'll share that on the screen and we can go over it. And then we can talk, ask questions about the salary review study. So with that, Bob, do you think that's a good streamlining of the conversation, resolution, job description and then salary review?
I think that makes sense, yes.
Wonderful. So we will start with any questions about the resolution in front of you. Linda Hamilton and then Chris Howitt. Linda?
I think I made salary. What would you, what are you narrating us to ask about Sammy? Because my question is about the salary review study. We should have that in our package before discussion. And we're having a discussion and we haven't had staff discussion input. I'm just wondering, do we view all that before we go into this whole hiring process? I think we do need the salary review study. That was asked for.
Correct. And I can share it with you right away. If you'd like, we can go over it and discuss it. Or we can discuss it after we discuss the process that, which is embodied in the resolution, job description, then salary review. If you would like us.
Whatever worked for you, but I just think we needed it in that package.
Absolutely understood. And we'll make sure we amend that to the record. I will be sharing it on the screen momentarily for everybody. The reason is, and that's exactly what we did with the executive committee. The salary review study is a little bit nuanced in how you analyze the information. So sharing it with you and presenting the information to you will provide a better context rather than just sharing the numbers without context, if that makes sense. So with that, with your permission, Linda, is it okay if we go with the same process? We talk about the resolution, then the job description and that salary review?
Yeah, go for it.
Awesome. All right. Next, next up is Chris Howitt.
Thank you. I've had lots of meetings this week and I just want to make sure I've been printing stuff out. Are we talking about the resolution that was on page 29 of the packet? Do I have the right resolution?
Correct. And under that resolution, we referenced the process as well.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure. It's been a busy week. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So just as a summary to Chris's question, page 25 includes a resolution. The resolution references the process that you see in page 13 and also references the job description and salary review study that we will be discussing shortly after. Nancy. I'll ask you to unmute if that might help with you being able to unmute. Nancy, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. Did I hear you correct in saying that there was staff input on these, on the job, not the job description, but the salary? Did I hear that correct?
No, the staff inputs we, that has been shared yesterday is a survey that you will be able to discuss and review. You have been able to review and you'll be able to discuss and review in executive session. The salary review study has been conducted by an external contractor who have experience in doing salary reviews for positions like this. And I'll be sharing more information about the vendor and also the sources of information that we used to produce that salary review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And I'll let the record show that Director Craig Albright just joined us. Welcome, Craig. And Chris Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it be possible, just to focus our discussion, would it be possible to put the resolution up on the screen? Share that right now with people.
With that objection, we can, absolutely. Let me see if I can share my, actually, I would like to ask another person to share my, their screen because that way I can see your faces and your hands.
I just think that would help us since we're specifically talking about the resolution right now. That would be helpful, I think.
Absolutely. So we'll be sharing on the screen resolution that we're talking about, which is in page 25. Now it'll take a minute to do that. So while we wait for you, Chris, or while we wait for the, for the screen to be shared, if anybody has any questions on it. I can do that. So you will see a different page. I'll do it on my screen, but you'll see a different page because I found it's in it. Are you, do you have it? All right, no worries. So you'll see on your screen the resolution language. Just disregard the page number because this is an older packet, but with the same content. So this is the resolution we're referring to. It refers to OSBA adopted goals. And also it refers to the factors that we have considered to proceed with this appointment. And also it includes reference to the job description that we will be discussing. It includes reference to the hiring of the executive director process that you have received in the packet today, which is in your packet in page 13, 14, 14. And go for it. Oh, sorry. And, and Chris, do you have any questions? And we'll share the screen momentarily again.
No, I just, I just want to just, in reference to this resolution, this just lays out publicly the process by which the Board of Directors has undergone this appointment so that we are recognizing that we have entered into a, this has been a very considered and methodical process. And we've done our due diligence to, to the organization in this way. So that's, that's just what this resolution is. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And also it allows us to move forward with this process as soon as we vote on this resolution. After we go with the job description review and the salary review, it will allow us to move forward with this process with statutory requirements to be able to meet an executive session and to be able to move forward with the steps of the hiring according to the process and the legal counsel review. Linda?
I mean, this is a lot of information of reading, but have the board ever done this process before? Is there a history of the board appointing an executive director? I read a comment from the staff, but I want to know if there's ever a history, because this is a lot to, to be reading, to be trying to process through on a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
I don't have all it done this way before, but I don't know. Ask the attorney, please.
Thank you, Linda. So thank you for your question. And maybe if you help me add to your question while acknowledging in the 85 years of the OSBA's history, I'm not sure if I can solidly say if that has been done before or not. But what I can ask, maybe in addition to your question, if legal counsel have an answer to that from our institutional historical knowledge, is that, is this a process that is possible for us? And is it a best practice? It is a best practice. It is a possible practice that boards consider from time to time according to the circumstances. But definitely I'll allow Bob Seringer to answer this question. And as you know, this is a decision that the board have moved forward with in July 11th. Bob, do you have any answers to the question that Linda asked? Or any clarification according to the context I shared?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Director Hamilton. It's obviously been a long time since the board was in a position of appointing a permanent executive director. And the last time that happened was before the time that I was actively involved in advising the board on these sorts of matters. So I'm afraid I'm not able to provide the historical information about what the board has done in the past when it's been in this situation. What I can tell you is that the process that we've helped the executive committee and the board put together here is entirely consistent with all of the authorities that dictate these processes. And those authorities include your bylaws, your, your policies that you've adopted, the resolutions that you've adopted in the last year in connection with, and motions that you've passed in connection with the, the procedures that you wanted to implement and whatever applicable state law there is. And the state law requirements primarily are around the question of whether you can have an executive session to discuss the appointment. And so we've made sure that each of these steps satisfies all of the requirements that are either imposed on you by state law or you have adopted for yourself through your bylaws, policies and motions.
Okay, thank you. Because I thought we voted on that July 11th to a point. So I was wondering why we going, I don't know, why we was going through this process. I thought we'd be talking about salary, next step and on, on, on. So that, that explains and I appreciate it because we did vote to a point. So, okay, thank you.
And it may be helpful for clarification on that in case anybody else was having that same question. The decision back in July was an agreement to consider making a direct appointment, knowing that there were some steps that had to be taken before it could actually be done. And you'll have the opportunity to do that today if that's what the board decides. So you set that in motion in July. We've laid the groundwork to make sure that you follow all of the requirements that you need to follow. And, and now you get to make the decisions that go along with that, including job description, salary, hiring criteria.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Director Hamilton. Next up is Director Jackie Crook and then Nancy. Jackie. Jackie, you're muted.
Um, I have a lot going on in this room, so I'm trying to get people quiet. So I, we don't have background. In my, in the packet, I don't have page 26. So part of the resolution, the part of the, on page 25, it goes to page 26, which I don't have. I don't know if anybody else does.
I can see that on my packet too. Page 26 is a blank page that was inadvertently dropped. So for the record, their last words on, and Bob, please confirm for me if this is correct. The last sentence in the resolution is subsection four, the process for hiring an executive director by direct appointment adopted by this resolution period. So the end of page 25 is the end of the resolution. Page 26 for the record is a blank page. Bob, are you in agreement?
I believe that's true, but I'm going to go back and look at my notes and I will raise my hand if we need to do something different here.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you, Jackie, for raising that.
Thank you.
Nancy.
Hi, everyone. This is Nancy. I was actually, had originally raised my hand because I wanted to comment to what Ms. Hamilton was saying. I recognize that it might have felt like a lot of information, but I was wondering if you, if we all agree that the resolution pretty much explains why we've done what we've done. I thought it was crafted very, very well that we, the current circumstances compel us to do something that is slightly different than our history. When you have an organization like this one that has had long time executive leadership, it is always difficult and uncomfortable, for lack of other terms, to the members and to everybody else when we do have to go about the process of replacing that person. But it doesn't mean that we're not, it doesn't mean that we can't do it slightly differently than we've done before. So I just want to make sure that everybody is comfortable with what we voted on before, that we can do this appointment. I think it's appropriate in this action in this time. Now, there could be a time in the future where that may not be appropriate. But in for this one, for this time. But in for this one, for this time and, and at a time such as this one, I think that we're I, I think we're doing the right thing is what I think I wanted to say. So sorry, I just wanted to put that out there for thoughts.
No worries. Thank you very much, Nancy. And seeing there's no hands up, I will ask the board indulgence that we will move forward now from the resolution. This is informational period for the resolution. And we will get back to it as a vote after we go through a few other steps. The next step now is discussing the job description. So if there's any questions on the job description, this is the time to do it. On behalf of the executive committee, I want to report back to the board. We had really robust conversation around the updates of the job description. The job description was overdue for an update for a very long period, as you may recall in our discussion July 11th. The a former deputy executive director, Mary Paulson, have supported the update or the work on updating the job description. And that was one resource that we have considered. Another resources updating the job description based on our strategic needs and a review of some really solid questions that the executive committee have asked. And the job description that you see in front of you is a recommendation to be adopted in this moment. So with that, I'm going to pause and ask if there's any questions. After any questions, there is any discussion or concerns or excitements about this update. So let's start with questions. Anybody has any questions on the job description? Any discussion on the job description?
Um, this is Nancy. I just wanted to say I thought it was well-written. I appreciate the effort. You can tell that you guys have come a long way. I know what it's like to be stuck with an old job description and then have to bring it to the, the current time. So appreciate the effort. But I, I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Nancy. Chris Crone.
Well, I'm, I'm really proud of this. I had nothing to do with creating it, but I did have a chance as part of the executive team to look at it. And it's, it's vastly improved and updated and really needed to happen. I just want to point out one of the areas that was not present in the previous job description was the PACE services section, which is a pretty significant piece of what the executive director oversees. And so that's just one of the changes that I wanted to point out, but I, I, I am really pleased that we have this position in place. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Chris Howitt.
Good morning. Yeah, I, I very much appreciate the position description being concise, having the information. There was a lot of disinformation that was implied, assumed. We thought somebody was doing it. And quite honestly, a little bit of levity. This takes a lot of weight off of me to be the historical document all the time. There's a lot of things in here that I recognize that were never actually put into writing. So I appreciate this, that this is a good, solid document. And it's a good thing to move forward with as well as the process of reviewing it on a regular basis.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Or discussion? All right, just to summarize, oh, Greg, please go ahead.
Yes, I was just saying that I wanted to say that both Chris and I have been on the board for a very long time and we've gone through several directors. And I don't think that we've ever done this appointment process before directly. We did have, we did move in a, you know, an interim, not interim, but the deputy we did hire as our executive director before. So that, that is something we have done in growing our own through through the process of going from a deputy to a director to the executive director. But I don't think we've ever not in all the time that I've been here, we've never just appointed one. We've always had the process and I can I'll defer to Chris if, if that is done, if I have that memory incorrect, but I appreciate the fact that we've updated everything and we brought it all forward and that we'll be going with a better document.
Thank you, Greg. Chris Howitt?
Nuance. Betsy Miller Jones was closer to just a straight appointment. We needed someone at the time. And so it was a a concise but expedited process. So that was, that was the one that most comes to my mind is Betsy Miller.
Thank you, Chris. Jackie?
Got a froggy voice today. The, the only question that I have is as Emily, I'm sure, I'm sure that Emily's taken a look at this and see if this captures what she believes that everything that she's doing or should do.
Emily, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jackie. Or is that it?
That's it.
Emily, would you like to have an opportunity to comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have an opportunity to review this and also along with the executive committee and do think that it is concisely outlines the duties of the job in a clear way, which I appreciate because it is kind of a guiding document as it should be for the executive director.
Seeing there's no hands up. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, Emily. Seeing there's no hands up on this item, we're going to move now to the salary review study. So as a summary of the discussion and Lionel, if you can see, there's a link. If you can share those slides, if you can, I can do it on my own. I just shared it over the chat. And I want to give you an overview of where we are today. Right now, if we go through public comments and then executive session and then vote on the resolution, the plan would be that we would be negotiating a contract with Emily. And the president elect and myself on your behalf will be negotiating the contracts with Emily, which will include a financial aspect, right? And to do that, we needed, and the board needed to have a good baseline of what the market looks like. And we have been advised that we're way overdue for having salary study. So the executive committee reviewed a salary study after you have authorized initiating that process. And an external contractor have provided that salary study and I'll be able to share it with you starting from page slide three. Awesome. So the contractor is Cascade Employers Association. They happen to have produced salary review studies for our staff as well, if I'm correct. Haley, right? And they, we did ask them about the job description that we do have access to. We provided them with the context of the organization and they know our organization. And they considered multitude of different sources relevant to the organizations that are comparable to this organization. So what you see here in front of you, an assumption that the market's norm is what is a hundred percent of the average of what we see from all organizations that are comparable. And that's two hundred ten thousand and two hundred dollars for the base cash pay. And then that's the first line you see in front of you. Now, the range goes twenty percent more to twenty percent less is the estimated high max, estimated low minimum based on the percentiles that they recommended. And they do recommend an organization to look for around the norm. So their range goes from one sixty-eight thousand dollars to two fifty-two thousand dollars. So I just want to give you a pause here and give you, this is the range that we shall look at to understand what the market looks like. Now, if you have questions where, how we got there, I'll give you more summary about it shortly. But right now, this is the high level. We're talking about one sixty-eight thousand to two hundred fifty-two, where the median or the market norm is assumed at two, is calculated at two hundred ten. Now, in addition to that, the market bonus is approximately twelve percent of any salary averaging of twenty-four thousand and three hundred, which brings the market total compensation to two hundred thirty-four thousand and five hundred. I want to just share the assumptions that has the bottom of the slide because these are really important assumption with how they created this data. All data has been aged to estimated current market levels, August, twenty twenty-four. That's what they looked at. Competitive markets range assumes that the company observes market's average base pay strategy, where the estimation of a hundred percent of the pay is the market norm, which reflects simple average of all data sources combined. And that's the number that you see two hundred ten thousand. And the organization comparison assumes that the market norm is a hundred percent. The percent of markets represents the organization's current pay compared to the average market norm. So these are important assumptions that's helped them produce that. And to my understanding, it is really good and standard practice. Now, focusing on market salary range, the minimum low of eighty percent assumption of market norm is one sixty-eight percent. And the maximum high estimate is two hundred fifty-two and the market norm is two hundred ten. Now, how did they arrive to that? They relied on five data sources and go to the next slide. Those five data sources are from comparable organizations. We shared with the organization that we are states association, a membership states association. We do have under our portfolio pace, which is the insurance pool. And they do have access to our finances, our budgets. And based on it, they had comparable organizations from five different survey sources. And they accommodate for those five different services to really relate to what's comparable to this organization. You see the numbers in front of you and their averages is what you see in what I shared with you originally in that green line, the market salary range. So the market salary range, the estimate low minimum is one sixty-eight, one fifty thousand, the estimated high maximum is two hundred fifty-two, two hundred fifty. And the market norm is two hundred ten to a hundred. During the executive committee have reviewed this and recommended to you. I did also follow up with additional questions to the researchers who provided this. And one of the questions I asked, would an outlier skew the data? And this is really robust data and study that makes it possible to have a good understanding of the organizations that we're comparing to, even if there is an outlier. This is really something that you can rely on as a base for the discussion. Now, in addition to that, I did reach out to Oregon School, National School Board Association and SBA. It represents state associations across the country. And they do have resources and information that they can solicit. They shared with me in confidence, a very detailed list of state associations, executive directors, their salaries. And while that information is confidential, we were able to redact the information of two states that we found are the most comparable state association organizations to ours in terms of certain parameters. So let's go to the next slide. So as you see here, these are, I maybe zoom a little bit out. So this is basically an two states that we redacted their names, but their budget is comparable to OSBAs. And this information is back from twenty twenty-two. So we want to consider that this is two years ago. And the service of years of service between two to four for those specific executive directors. And you can see their annual compensation package are actually a little bit on the higher end of the salary comparison. So this is just an additional piece of information for us to consider, to be aware of. My recommendation is we continue to operate with the recommendation from the Cascades review, but have that in mind that these are two states that we were able to access. If you are interested in knowing which specific states are they, please feel free to reach out to me, our Lionel, and we'll be able to share that with you in confidence. But it is confidential information on the request of NSBA. I want to take a moment to really appreciate you initiating this process. It will give us a clear footing on how we can start this process. And also share my appreciation to the National School Board Association for promptly sharing the data with us, wanting us to be successful in this process. I think that will save us lots of time and resources and appreciate their support on it. So now let's go back to slide three. The high level description. How this is useful? So if we go forward with a negotiated contract, this salary review is the basis for the negotiation process that will go through at the end, any vet, any numbers will consider the parameters that you shared with the board when we were discussing this process. And you'll have a tentative agreement that should, in my perspective and opinion, observe this range. So with that, I will pause and ask, do you have any questions about the data that you see in front of you or how we will use it? Or how we arrived at it or anything else you want to discuss on that? But if you would like to ask questions first and then do discussion, that might be a more streamlined. So now we'll pause and we'll go to Chris and Linda. Chris?
Thank you. I realize that there are fewer state associations than perhaps there are superintendents of districts that have similar budgets, maybe not the same employee groupings, but I'm wondering whether or not any of this was compared with other high-level executives, which is what our superintendents are and whether or not that information was available through COSA. And I'm also a little bit why this wasn't in our packet for us to look at. It's a little bit hard for me to look at it being moved back and forth through a screen. And, but yeah, just what other comparators there were. And on some of this, was it based on experience, years of, of service, you know, on how much someone was making had they been ten years in the job or were they one year at the job? So that's kind of a questions for me.
Absolutely. And these are really good questions. I'm capturing them now and make sure to, if we have additional details that Cascades can share with us, that they can address those and maybe report back to you. In terms of the superintendents, there is a word of caution that we have heard is that school districts and OSBA, while we serve our school districts and the high-level executives of school district superintendents have lead their organizations, they are two different organizations. And there might be a different salary range for COSA that probably might be higher or different. But also it's a different type of organization. We are a large membership association with advocacy piece with insurance piece. So I would share that word of caution. And maybe I want to lean in and ask Haley, do we know for sure if we have, have the superintendents included or not?
We do not know whether or not the superintendents were included. The Cascade uses a variety of sources of information. And so I would assume that those types of positions would come up in their survey. Because they use, I think, four or five that Sammy showed there on the screen. I would imagine that those executives would come up in their searches. And I do recall Cascade saying that they do look at yours in the position experience and those sorts of things when they're pulling the data and analyzing it. But it is a very complex process that they go through. So anyone of you who has questions, I'm sure that they'd be happy to talk to you individually about their process and how that works.
Any further questions, Chris? Let's see your hands down. I'll go back to Linda, then Clyde, then Chris Crone and Linda.
Yes. God, I wish we did have this in the package because it's hard seeing it on the screen. And this is one of the biggest concerns I have moving forward. We agreed to point to that, but when we made Emily made Emily interim executive director. You guys came to us with the package. The decision was already made that the salary would be two hundred and fifty thousand. And I specifically asked would that include her doing her deputy director job plus the executive job? And she said, yes. And the next month or so, then it was Haley deputy director. Taking on that job. So the I'm worried about those two salary because we had to I assume increase Haley's salary, but can, I don't know what's going to happen. I feel like we're going to be filling two positions. And salary is very important, but when we went to from, that was like an eighty thousand dollar increase to two hundred and fifty thousand. And how are we gonna move forward? Will we have to hire the deputy director that Haley's job is doing? Because she didn't do both of those jobs, which was the increase for the salary was my understanding. Of two hundred and fifty. So I'm a little concerned about that. I do wish this was in the package. Some of us do have understanding of salary comparison and the salary comparison should be in state, not out of state. And the two states that was chosen for the comparable, those two states are not confidential. That should be released to us, which two states this should be a in-state comparable salary. So I just hope we can come to some common grounds in this salary because it's very it'll be a difficult one.
Thank you, Director Hamilton. Director Clyde Rude.
All right. Thank you. I agree with Linda and Chris that this should be in the packet. Is there any way to send this to us via email right now or put it on board books right now so that we can look through it at our leisure? Also too, just so I don't have to dig through mountains of paperwork, what was Jim's salary at the time he left? And what is Emily's current salary right now? When we put both Jim's and her former together? Just so that we have it in front of us as a reference number.
Sounds good. Thank you. So Clyde, to your request, and just I want to make a point of order here is this board have absolutely the discretion of over financial oversight and ask questions about how our expenditures are. And this is one of the major ones that we need to make a decision on. But definitely hiring decisions and might be beyond the executive director might be out of the scope here, but definitely please feel free to ask those questions. Just want to make sure we're streamlining our decision making. So to the first request, can we receive this file? The board will receive this file momentarily via your emails. So look for your email and you'll have that file. So you can review it on a PDF instead of on the screen. In addition to that, it will be uploaded to Board Book after the end of this meeting for the record. Second, to the request on the financial salary for the former executive director. Happy to share that with you. I don't have it on hand now. But if any board member or staff have access to it, we'll make sure we share it. Just to review the discussion since then, there was an important highlight that so we have not done a salary review for a very long while. And that's what prompted us to review the salary range and understand where we are right now. Was there any requests I did not capture Clyde that you want me to address or make sure we follow up on? Just to make sure I captured everything you had.
I think you're covering it. I mean, the main thing is, is I just want to compare what we're paying now, what we have paid in relation to what we are proposing to pay in the future.
Sure. Sure. Okay, so I will read to the record some information that you will have on the chat. So I'll read it verbally so the audience can also see it and listen to it about the former executive director salary limit. So also I want to mention one more thing about this salary review. The organization have actually addressed that this is a market of Salem, Oregon, and we're looking at Salem, Oregon where this organization sits. So they definitely consider that in their salary range review and address that in the recommendations. Now, next up is Chris Cronin and then Neelam. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do have a question, but I want to, I want to just also reflect a bit on what I've heard from Director Hamilton, Director Rude, and and I know I really appreciate the the concern that board members have for being fiscally responsible as an organization. I appreciate that. And that's what I hear in their questions that we do the right thing. In terms of setting a salary that is that is fair and accurate. And that's what the board directed us to do at the July meeting is they requested a salary review. A professional salary review to make sure that we were in the right ballpark. And personally, I have never seen a better process than what Cascade did in terms of preparing this for us. It was way beyond the scope of anything we could have done individually. They are, they're an organization that does this professionally and I, I feel really comfortable with this range that they have prepared. So I, I, I just want to affirm that I know that this board is very concerned and should be about making sure we're in the right place. My question for you, President Sammy, is that, is the estimated market norm, is that a an average or is that a median score? I mean, in terms of the statistical, is it? Do you know, do you know that? Or does anybody know that? Because it makes a difference.
Yeah, to my understanding, it is an average of the medians. So each study calculated a median.
Right, right.
And this one is the average of the five medians from each study. So to summarize, it's in easy speak, because it's been a while since I did statistics myself. The median is the fiftieth percentile.
It's the middle. Median is the middle. And the average combination. So what you're saying is it's really both, which
Yes.
makes it even more accurate and I feel very comfortable with this data then. So I didn't know, so I'm glad I asked. Thanks.
Correct. So thank you. So yeah, absolutely. So if you have a median and you have margin of error from one survey, if you have five medians. When you average them, the margin of errors becomes less. I want to put to the record that we are one hour away. And I know that board members might be eager to have a robust discussion and also we have thirty minutes allocated for public comments if we do have any registration. We don't. Perfect. So I don't want to say we're ahead of time or we're short of time. We have one hour. So make sure that we handle our questions efficiently and effectively, and I'll do my best with that. To the record, and it was shared with you in text over the chat. The former executive director Jim Green's contract was slated as such. One ninety seven thousand and twenty dollars, one ninety seven thousand and twenty dollars base pay. Tax sheltered annuity, eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty four. Annual bonus, twenty thousand dollars. And for board members, you can review those numbers I just read over the chat from Haley Purcell, Neelam, and then Chris. Neelam.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for this and I really appreciate emailing the PowerPoint and posting it to Board Book afterwards. I just wanted to confirm. Are these compared? I thought I heard you say it's compared to two other states. Is that right?
No, actually.
Did I miss here? Okay.
The two data points that we shared from NSBA are from two state associations. There are two sample points. And the way I would say it is two anecdotes, but this is a robust data from a huge number of survey results. Haley, do you want to add anything to the sources that they
Yeah, so Cascade does a survey of Oregon and nationally. So it's not just two states. It's the whole country that their resources are based on.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. This is, this is really helpful and you know, I appreciate the additional information about Cascade and you know, I I think this is a really great analysis and information for us to consider. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Neelam. Chris? Chris Hamilton?
Yeah, thank you. Um. I realized that we my recollection and I'll admit it could be fuzzy this morning is that we did do a salary review fairly recently. And by recently, I would estimate within the last five years that we did one that brought the former executive director higher into compensation. So we have done one, what I would consider to be recent. It may not have been within the last couple of years, but there has been some salary comparison done. Doing the comparison with organizations of similar size that have a variety of management things that they do. I do need to also state, and I'm not sure where this has come from, whether or not it's from the minutes being transferred from another storage online component. And I can certainly go and talk with Lanell later, but we have some serious misinformation in some of our minutes that I was trying to go look up to find information. We have incorrect information in our minutes. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that as a side. But I just wanted to emphasize that my recollection is that we have done some salary review and knowing where the salaries are being compared with any of the organizations that we're comparing it to should at least be able to give us a range of what they're doing. I recognize that they may not want to give us the exact. Here's what they're making down to the penny, but a range should be available to us. It's not confidential. And if it is, then they need to do a different comparator to another organization because the salary that we pay our people is not confidential. So.
That's right. Thank you, Chris. And maybe we can ask Cascades if there are any of their survey sources are obtained from public institutions. Our institutions with with public transparency around their salaries. I will ask maybe Cascades to share that with us and if they can share either a percentage of the data sources, which ones are public and if there's any lists that they can share with us, that would be great. I just want to make sure from a statistical point of view. We will be starting to see anecdotal data points when we pull them out one by one. And this is really statistical summary of their ranges, but definitely that's the will of the board without objection. I will ask Cascades if they can share with us any of their data sources, which ones were public institutions that they can share. And not to be confused with the two anecdotal state associations that I shared, some of them are public entities, some of them are not. And that's why their contracts are not always public information. So what we received from NSBA is a summary of survey data that we're handling with the duty of care that they respect, they need. But definitely I'll ask Cascades if they can share more information about public institutions. Any other questions or discussion? So you will receive the, or you have received the PDF and your documents and we will refer to this documents again. Shall the board vote on this resolution and shall the board move forward with negotiating a tentative agreement? When we consider a tentative agreement, we'll definitely have this available for us again to compare to and refer to. Greg?
Yes, Director Rude also requested what the current salary and benefits of the of the interim director as we see it. I would like to know how that compares to what we see on the screen, please.
Absolutely. So the question from Director Ruth, thank you, Director Kins for highlighting that, that we need to provide the current interim and acting, well, the current interim salary and benefits that we have. So staff are working on it right now and they will share it as soon as we can provide it. My recollection, I think that it was somewhere in December or January, that current executive director salary, and you'll see this in the chat as two hundred fifty thousand dollars, no bonuses, and nineteen thousand dollars tax sheltered annuity. For board members who joined us recently, this is a summary of where we reached at this tentative agreement that the board agreed on. We were presented with circumstances where the acting executive director was willing to help us out during those difficult times. And the board discussed this this range and approved it by majority votes. Given the circumstances and of course, this salary is is connected to at will provisions, if that makes sense. So I just want to make sure that's highlighted because it may play a factor into the the range as well that you were seeing. So that's the current executive director salary for their interim contract. Any questions? And thank you, Greg, for highlighting that. Any, anything else? If there's nothing else. We will move forward now to what's next on the agenda. Public comment?
They have to.
Public comments and then approve the resolution, right?
Yeah.
All right. So I will have to open the public comments and have to read the script, which is right here. The public comments period now is open. This public comments period is limited to for the purposes of receiving comments on the executive director hiring standard criteria and policy directives discussed in the meeting and outlined in the board packets, including comments on the following documents and information just discussed. Executive director hiring process, executive director job description, executive director salary range. And for resolution to establish hiring standards, criteria and policy directives for the hiring of an executive director by direct appointment. Speakers may not comment on any other matters. Comments on any other matters welcomed and can be directed to info@osba.org. Community input shall be three minutes per person. Each person wishing to address the board must individually request to be recognized during the public comments period, which is now by submitting a comment in the chat function on the Zoom platform with their full name or by raising their electronic hand on the Zoom platform. When called upon by the president, unmuting and stating their full name. And if they are affiliated with a school board or any other entity that's a member of OSBA to state the school board or entity they represent for the record before speaking. So to summarize, if you're here for a public comment, please raise your hand. Any members of the community who would like to provide public comments or write your name in the chat. And I'll give it fifteen seconds to give people opportunity to do that. Do we have any pre-registered people? And there's no people who pre-registered for public comments. Seeing there's no public comments, the public comment period is now closed. Next up is an action item, resolution to establish hiring standards, criteria and policy directives for hiring with the hiring of an executive director by direct appointment. So where we are right now, after we have not had an opportunity to ask questions, have a robust discussion on each item of the salary range, the the executive director job description and the process and resolution. Now is the time for us to vote on the resolution to start the process and approve those. Approving the resolution also approves the process that we have reviewed in the packets earlier today and in your package from page fourteen. So now I'll pause if there's any additional detail Bob would like to add and then we'll go into a discussion. Bob?
Uh, no, I think that's exactly where the board is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So for that, we're going to share on the screen the resolution. So folks. Thank you. So for that, we're going to share on the screen the resolution, so folks are reminded where we are. And I would like to entertain any questions or final discussion before we enter into a motion. Linda Hamilton.
We did get, which I already knew from asking last question on Jim's salary of 197,000 was the base. Someone asked, what was Emily's current salary? And I only know of the 250,000. What is the current salary? Because she's been doing this job for, I think, over a year now, maybe almost a year in November.
Thank you, Director Hamilton, for the question. The answer to both questions are available in the chat function over Zoom, and I'll read it for the record. The former executive director salary was 197,000 and $20.
Oh, no.
Tax, sorry, God.
I already had, they got Jim. I was asked, someone asked, what was Emily's current salary? I'm trying to figure that. I, I only know of the 250,000. Was, is that it currently?
No, that, that's not it. Let me give you the details of both for folks who might want to also understand the context of all. So the former executive director is $190,000 and $20. There was a tax sheltered annuity, which is 18,754. There was an annual bonus of 20,000. Now for that current interim executive director salary, you have $250,000. No bonus, $19,000 tax sheltered annuity. On interim paces. Does that answer your question, Director Hamilton?
Yeah, that's one. And the last one is no public comments. How, was there a notice would go out to the public to? For them to, how did that go out? How, what, what was it public?
Yes, thank you for the question. The legal requirement was satisfied by OSBA posting. The notice immediately after July 11th meeting, we posted it on the Oregon School Board Association's website homepage. And that legal requirement was fulfilled. In addition to that, OSBA have published the notice. Through all of our social media platforms and also through Oregon Education News as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Next up, we have Chris Howitt.
Um, I had a question. I wasn't sure where to ask it, so I'll do it now before we get to this final part. I noticed that the, what it appeared to be the only place that we advertised that we were. That we had an opening in the executive director position was on OSBA's website, and I was curious if it was advertised anywhere else. How anybody knew that was on there? What, what was the extent of letting people know that we were. Accepting applications or interest in the position beyond just putting it on our website.
So Chris, probably there's a nuance to your question that maybe I would like to ask Bob Sterringer to clarify.
Only statute, thank you, Mr. President. The only statutory requirement is that the vacancy be announced. And the statutory requirement doesn't say anything beyond that. I'm aware of the announcement being made on the website. That's legally sufficient for. Complying with the statute. I'd have to defer to probably Haley on whether. That announcement was, was spread any further than that, but. If not, even if it was just announced on the website, that was sufficient to satisfy the requirements of the statute.
And that announcement did go out on news clips and social media along with the information about the public comment period.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on the resolution? Alright, see none? I believe we're ready for a motion to consider the. To, to vote on the resolution. Bob, if I'm not mistaken, we vote on the resolution, then we enter executive session, correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. So we can, we can actually do that. So with that, the president entertains a motion or a comment from Director Linda Hamilton.
Oh, is this, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we narrowed down a salary. Is that in the resolution? We're gonna make it all one package, right?
Yes, so thank you for the question. To answer the question, sorry, God. So the salary range is a document that the resolution references. And was presented to the board today. The salary range is one of the criteria or one of the elements that will inform the next step, which is. Negotiating the tentative agreement with the executive director. Now, Linda, board members, all board members will have. A say on deciding whether the tentative agreement is agreeable or not based on. Their oversight perspective, financial fiduciary for the organization, the salary range review and other factors. That they may consider, including the factors that we stated in our resolution here. That were mentioned in the second whereas. In the first, in the second, third whereas. So I would say definitely the salary range review is acknowledged in the resolution. As basis to start the negotiation process within that range. Does that answer your question?
I, I understand what you're saying, but when we're coming to a resolution or recommending we appoint or hire like where we at. We come to a solid salary agreement. When we leave that range, you guys can go to the top highest paying. I thought we were voting on a salary. Period, not a range.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, no, thank you. That's a very good question. So I believe Lanell already locked in a time in September. We're meeting on September 11th. So on September 11th, between now and September 11th, this is, these, these, these are the steps we're going to take. If we vote on this resolution. We vote on the resolution now. We meet in executive session now, and we get to discuss. Any details that we want to discuss regarding the hiring of an executive, the, an executive officer. And we'll be able to deliberate on any steps, any, any conditions or any questions that we have about moving forward. We'll get an opportunity to discuss among ourselves and ask questions according to the criteria that we have here in the resolution. After that, you will be authorizing the president and vice president to act on your behalf. In a negotiation process that's consider all the information in this salary range, and then. When there is a tentative agreement, just like how you may negotiate with your unions and your local districts. When there is an tentative agreement between Emily Neshik, the candidate and. The board on your behalf from Chris Cronin and myself. We will be presenting with you a salary, a salary amount period. With all the contracts will be in front of you, and you'll be able to vote on that one. So your input today will inform that negotiation process. And your discussion and decision on September 11th board meeting will be either formalizing that step. Or giving us direction to do any further steps. Does that answer your question, Linda? Thank you for asking this process question.
That was very outlined. I appreciate you going through that. At what, what point do we discuss the staff input before we make these decisions?
And we will be having the ability to discuss the staff inputs immediately after we make this vote in the executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Chris Cronin.
Uh, I move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
It's been seconded. I'm gonna go for, for a vote by voice. Please unmute. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. I think I heard from you, Craig, but it was a little bit delayed and a little bit robotic because of the connection. Could you state your vote? Or type it out on the chat for the record.
Maybe yes.
Alright, is there, I will, I sent him over the chat to clarify the vote. Craig, could you repeat your vote? Alright, the president will ask any nays, please say nay. Alright, it's the judgment of the president that the motion passes unanimously. Any objections to that, Haley? Passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Alright.
Um, Mr. President, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Can I just ask everybody to, when you're sending in chats, please send it to everyone in the meeting, not to me specifically? Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, as a matter of fact, let's make sure we use the chat judiciously. So if you have any inquiries. Feel free to raise your hand and ask your inquiries, and if there's any discussion, we need to have it during the meeting. So thank you, and anything that you have sent to OSBIIT, feel free to restate it to the record right here. So with that, now we voted unanimously on the, on that matter, the resolution, and now we're going to executive session. And I will read the script, and we'll be asking Emily and Haley to leave the room for now. The board members will be able to invite them back when, if they would like to. So we'll read this script first before we go to an executive session and stop the recording. The OSBA Board of Directors will now enter executive session to consider. The employment of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. The executive session is held pursuant to. Oregon Revised Statute is 192660. Section two subsection A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff. Or individual agents. And Oregon Revised Statute 192335, section nine, and Oregon Revised Statute. Forty-two-two-five, that is four zero two-two-five. OSBA board members and OSBA staff members, Lanell Trissel and OSBA Board Legal Counsel. Bob Sterringer shall be moved to a breakout room during the executive session. Members of the media are permitted, are permitted to attend. However, media are not permitted to disclose information discussed. In the executive session. At this moment, I would like to ask if you are a member of the media, please identify yourself on the chat function or by raising your hand. All other staff members, all other staff and members of the public will remain in the meeting room. No decisions will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session, and the session participants will again join the meeting room. So at this moment, I would like to ask board members to break out room. That will be shortly. And we, we will aim to come back to the main session before the end of this board meeting at this hour. So with that, Lanell, could you open the breakout room?
So executive session is now adjourned, we will return to open session. And we have, we have recording, please wait a moment while everyone returns to the meeting room. So as a reminder, for, do we have everybody back?
Not yet, just waiting for Nancy. I think it might be because she's on the iPhone, so it might be difficult to get to the button that leaves the breakout, yeah.
Yeah.
I also don't see Linda, sorry to interrupt, and I just text her to see if she was, it looked like she dropped off.
Okay. She dropped off, she dropped off at ten fifty.
Everyone is back.
Thank you. So as a reminder, the executive session is now adjourned and we are now in open session with me in the room and with us here in the room. Returned Haley Purcell and Emily Nishik and staff as well. As a reminder, all matters discussed in executive session shall remain confidential. Don Watson. That was from before. All right, the president now will entertain a motion in your packet at page thirty two for your consideration. Chris Howitt?
Um, I just, I'm not seeing my full screen. You said a couple of people dropped off, but we still have a quorum.
Uh, the presence will pause to check for a quorum. Do we have a quorum? It's been determined that the board has a quorum. Continue to have a quorum. Thank you, Chris. Now, back to business, the board of OSBA will be able to consider offering the executive job offer with a sample motion at page thirty two. Is there any board member who wish to make a motion? And Director Linda Hamilton is rejoining us now. Vice President Emily Smith, what's your motion?
I move to offer the executive director position to Emily Nishik and authorize the OSBA board president and OSBA president-elect to negotiate a salary and benefit package with the candidate in consultation with outside legal counsel.
Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. President, I would like to second the motion.
Been second, uh, moved by Vice President Emily Smith and second by Greg, Director Greg Kents, Jackie Crook in discussion. Actually, Director Jackie Crook, you are muted and until you unmute, I want to ask permission from the board without objection. We will extend the meeting for the purposes of the vote and limited discussion for five minutes until eleven oh five. There's no objection. Jackie Crook, please unmute.
Am I unmute, am I unmuted?
You are, we can hear you.
The, the, the only concern that I have on this motion is, um, is the fact that the, the board hasn't had any discussion on, um, giving a recommendation to the president and, and vice president of the organization. And in my, in my realm, we have a recommendation to the team that goes. Um, and so the recommendation, as I see, is what was presented to us today. As far as salary ranges and whatever, and what we want to offer, what we would like to offer, and then they negotiate from there. That they have some parameters, but the only parameters that I see is what's been presented. So I have a problem with that process.
Thank you, Jackie. Bob, do you mind to correct me if I'm wrong in the following process? The board shared with us parameters to consider that was approved in the resolution. Uh, and also, uh, board members may state today, uh, any parameters or, uh, uh, negotiation elements that he wants to share. And they do have an opportunity to do that in executive session, or they can transmit that to the president, president-elect. Not to be distributed back to the full board, but to inform the negotiation process subject to a tentative agreement for the full board. Is all what I said could be in order to do?
Yeah, I think that that's all accurate. And then, of course, at the end, any proposed agreement has to come back to the board for approval. That, that'll, that is, uh, in the end, the board gets to decide that.
Thank you. So Director Crook and all board members, feel free to state on the record any additional parameters that you want to inform the negotiation. Also, please share those with me and, uh, and Director Chris Cronin at any point of time, as soon as possible, the better. And we will have the responsibility to bring back to you a tentative agreement that can be agreed by both party, the full board, the majority of the full board, and Emily Nishik as the other party. So with that, thank you, Jackie, for the comments. Thank you, Bob, for the clarification. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing there is no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote. And after stating the motion, it's been moved to offer the executive director position to Emily Nishik and to authorize the OSBA board president and OSBA president-elect to negotiate a salary benefit and benefits package with the candidates in consultation with outside legal counsel. Uh, to the motion, the votes is.
Greg Albrecht?
Yes.
Jeff Crapper? Chris Cronin? Yes. Jackie Crook?
Yes.
Lori Danzuka?
Yes.
Katrina Doughty? Neelam Gupta? Linda Hamilton?
Yes.
Chris Howitt?
No.
Tristan Irvin?
Yes.
Greg Kents?
Yes.
Kristi Kocke?
Yes.
Steve Lowell? Sonia McKenzie? Alonso Oliveris?
Yes.
Chrissy Wrights?
Yes.
Clyde Rude?
Yes.
Nicole Schott? Emily Smith?
Yes.
Nancy Thomas?
Yes.
Glenn Walker? Don Watson?
Yes.
Fourteen to one?
Fourteen to one, seeing the.
Hey Sammy, you're muted.
Thank you. Seeing the votes in the affirmative are prevailing with fourteen votes in the affirmative and one vote uh, in the negative, the motion passes. Well, thank you. Uh, I want to just really highlight how important this discussion was. And I want to invite board members, please send me any parameters or information that's the board, that negotiation uh, should be informed with, and we will report back to you on September eleventh, uh, board meeting with, uh, uh, tentative agreements, or that's my hope. I want to really appreciate this solid discussion. Uh, Greg Kents, for what reason would you like to be recognized?
I just, uh, you answered my question. I was wondering whether there would be, uh, an opportunity for us to weigh in on this before the negotiations begin. And you've answered my question. So you want us to send recommendations directly to you?
Correct.
And then we would be able to, uh, put, provide that input. I appreciate it.
Correct, absolutely. And Bob, just to make sure, uh, people are aware, any communication around that is, continues to be a public record, uh, correct?
That would be a public record, yes.
Yes, so please feel free to share it. Uh, it's going to be a public record and then, uh, we will have the responsibility to consolidate that information you shared to make sure we bring back a tentative agreement that's in public, the board will find agreeable and acceptable. Uh, Jackie Crook.
This is the conversation that, um, I need to have in open session. This is um, the, the problem that I have. And, and that is that it should be a board discussion as a board, sitting board on salary, what to give, um, direct, to give direction to our negotiators. And the idea that we're going to separately give you information, um, um, is is really not the way we should be doing business. And I think that we need to reevaluate on how we really want to do business that, um, that shows that we're actually, you know, doing what, uh, the job of the Board of Directors.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, could you clarify, are you objecting to the salary range that the board approved today? Uh, or would you like to send a parameter that we depart from the salary range that we approved today? Is that your comments or just about process?
Uh, I don't believe we, uh, no, I, I'm not objecting. Um, but we have not had a conversation about it. We just got it today. We, and you're, and, uh, we're supposed to go and, um, and say we agree with that, or we don't agree, or what? I'm, I'm, I'm saying that there was no, there was, we, we haven't had any kind of, um, robust conversation about compensation, what we would, you know, what, uh, what we did for Jim, what we're doing now, what we're going to do in the future. This has nothing to do with person, the, the person, this has to do with the process. And I, and I object with this type of process that we're going to do everything, we did it in emotion, we did it, you know, uh, anyway, I'm, I I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm just, I'm not objecting to, I'm object, objecting to our process when it comes to some of the ways we are presently doing business.
Well, thank you, Jackie, to, since, uh, we have been, uh, uh, since we have been, um, uh, we don't have further business in front of the board. I want to thank you for spending that time today. Uh, and if you have any further comments or questions you would like to share with me, please reach out. Without further objection, the board will be adjourning at eleven, ten AM right now. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Take care.